Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Burbank Planning Commission. Today is Monday, May 8th, 2023. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period public comment tonight during oral communications. Person speaking during the general public comment period may provide the Planning Commission oral communication on any matter concerning city business. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public hearing, public comments period. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by making an in-person comment, please present a completed speaker card to planning staff. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by telephone, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. We'll have the invocation by Ms. Wick. Please rise.
Good evening. I'd like to dedicate this meeting and this invocation to Lawrence Wick, a family member of mine who passed this last week. And I'd like to share one of his favorite quotes by John F. Kennedy. As we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest form of appreciation is not to utter words but to live by them. We are very blessed to live in Burbank. We are blessed to live in a city and to be here tonight to make wise choices and hear from the citizens. And with that being said, let's for a moment just give thanks. Thank you very much.
Please join me in the pleasures of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for...
Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
Chair Rizadi, Vice Chair Attikanian.
Present.
Commissioner Monaco.
Present.
Commissioner Elric.
Present.
And Commissioner Wick.
Present.
Do we have any announcements from city staff?
No announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. There are no hearing items on tonight's agenda. We will move on to reports to commission. There are two reports on tonight's agenda. Now is the time and place for the Planning Commission to consider a report on an overview of the Burbank Civic Center project. Will the representative of the Library Services Department please introduce yourself and summarize the report for us?
Good evening, Vice Chair Attikanian and members of the Planning Commission. Could I have the slides up, please? My name is Elizabeth Goldman. I'm the Library Services Director for the City of Burbank, and I am here this evening to provide you with an overview of the Burbank Civic Center project. This is a proposed city plan that involves a replacement central library, a replacement for the Administrative Services Building, new open space, parking, and housing in the civic center area. The project is still very much in its conceptual stages. Nothing has been designed yet, and a developer has not been selected. My presentation to you tonight is part of a stakeholder and community engagement effort that the project team has been conducting over the past six months, which has included presentations to many of the city boards and commissions who have some stake in the project one way or another, like yourselves. The Burbank Civic Center project is a transformative opportunity to meet city council goals and community needs while building a thriving downtown neighborhood in a sustainable and fiscally responsible way. It brings together many longstanding goals of the city and community and resolves several major outstanding capital needs while contributing to city objectives around housing, economic development, and sustainability. The need for a modernized and expanded central library was first identified by the city way back in 1989 as part of the facility's master plan. At that time, the central library was only about 25 years old, and already the city could determine that it needed to, was not big enough to suit the needs and needed to be modernized. Burbank has consistently had very high usage of its libraries as physical facilities compared to other libraries in our region, and our system as a whole has long been under-resourced in terms of square feet. In 1992, the city completed some minor cosmetic renovations of the central library meant to tide things over until a larger project could be done. It's now been 30 years, and unfortunately, that's all we've accomplished. In 2002, the Buena Vista Library opened, and while a beautiful and loved asset to the community, it can't serve that system-wide demand on its own. In 2003, Burbank voters passed Measure L by more than two-thirds to provide funding for a new or renovated central library, as well as improvements to the Northwest Library. Unfortunately, these funds were contingent on receipt of state matching funds that Burbank was unsuccessful in obtaining and then a couple of years later ceased to exist. So the local tax was never assessed. Also in 2003, the city council approved a planned development for the Burbank Civic Center to include the Community Services Building, a new library, and open space. CSB was the only portion of this that was completed, and that planned development agreement expired in 2018. In the following years, there were a few other attempts to find creative solutions to the issue of the central library, but nothing moved forward. So jumping ahead to 2020 and 2021, the city conducted a study called "A Vision for a New Central Library for Burbank," and that study is available on our project website if you're interested. So that study gathered updated public input on community needs for a library, and in addition, it included cost estimating and an assessment of whether renovation of the existing library or new construction was the best path. In 2021, upon accepting the study, the city council gave staff direction to pursue a plan for a new library. Seismic, ADA, and hazardous materials issues in the current building, plus its constrained lot, meant the renovation would provide the city less value for its money. In addition, as I noted, Burbank has very high library usage and a demonstrated need for additional square feet, not just the 45,000 square feet we have in the current building. As a result of this council direction, staff embarked on our current project. While I'm the one speaking to you tonight, the current project is an interdepartmental collaboration of the library, Community Development Department, Public Works Department, Financial Services Department, and City Attorney's Office, with significant input from every other city department as well. The current study started with an analysis of a financially feasible path for the current project that also utilized the sites in question to their best value and supported council and community goals. This resulted in the current proposal and the plan to utilize a public-private partnership or P3 model for the project. Before I get into the details, to give you a sense of what areas we're talking about, here's a conceptual site plan. This slide shows just one possible configuration of the elements, but to use it as an example, you can see the three spaces we're talking about to the right-hand side of that image, where there's a U-shaped yellow box. That's the current central library. In the middle is the civic block with the Community Services Building. So you see the new library in orange, which also is combined with office space for the departments currently in the Administrative Services Building. Then there's some open space that can be created by taking down the Administrative Services Building. There's more housing on that spot. The parking is underground. And then to the left, behind City Hall, where there's currently surface parking and the structure that crosses Orange Grove, that's another site that's proposed to be used for this. And all of these sites are identified as housing opportunity sites in the housing element that was approved by city council last fall. So in this configuration, you see the new 65,000-square-foot library, and then on top of that, 20,000 square feet for the offices. At this size and in a modern building, the library will be able to meet the current and future needs of the community, from supporting children and their families in building basic reading skills to helping students be successful through their educational journey at any age. The building will expand the library's ability to provide support for Burbank's workforce with basic and advanced technology and job training offerings, and it will provide space to read, to meet, to study, and to develop ideas and innovations. The open space adjacent to the library could be used for library and recreation programs, for events like celebrations, concerts, and movies, for vendors and outdoor eating and reading spaces, and for interactive play spaces for children. Along with the lack of spaces inside libraries in Burbank in the downtown area, there's a lack of open and park spaces, so this also helps meet that need. Parking, as I mentioned, will be primarily underground, preserving the street level for human uses, and the housing again is on identified housing opportunity sites. This next slide is an aerial view of the same spaces, where you can see in the lower, well, the upper right corner is the library again, surrounded by yellow dashes there, the current library. Next to that, with the green is the open space, the orange is the new library, and the yellow is housing, and then coming down to the lower left is behind City Hall. The residential component of this project is proposed to be about 475 units, with 20% of them being affordable and 80% workforce rates. In this configuration, the three residential buildings are about six or seven stories tall, which is comparable to several other buildings in the area, including the office building next to City Hall that houses Congressman Schiff's office. Each residential building may have a small amount of commercial space on the ground floor, and the private buildings will have their own parking for residents and commercial users. That's separate from the public parking. Again, this is just one possible arrangement of elements, but it shows that the identified lots have the capacity for these uses, and it gives you a little bit of a sense of how the neighborhood would feel. So the estimated cost of the public assets, that is, the library, the office space, the open space, and the public parking, is about $132 million in 2023 dollars. The project is proposed to be funded through a combination of use of a portion of the revenues from Fund 534, the municipal infrastructure fund, which was established by the Measure P vote of the residents in 2018 to enable the city to construct and improve public amenities like these. In addition, the project hopes to bring in some revenue from ground leases for that housing that is on public property. That will help offset the costs, and the city is actively seeking grant funding for various aspects. With all of these needs considered, staff have recommended to city council the P3, Public Private Partnership Model, as a way to proceed with the work. This model was recently successfully used in the Long Beach Civic Center. There's a few pictures from that project here. That project was much larger. It included a new city hall, port headquarters, a library, a park, housing, and hotels. The P3 model provides the city with a number of benefits. First of all, it transfers risk away from the city, and this includes several types of risk, construction-related risks, risks related to the long-term condition of the assets, and financial risks. It also optimizes costs by coordinating across the lifecycle of assets from the earliest project stages. For instance, someone who might be doing the maintenance down the road would be part of the decisions about materials to use in the beginning. Make sure you don't put any features that might look special but be extremely costly to maintain. The P3 model also creates incentives for the developer to build and maintain the assets on schedule and to establish standards, ensuring that the assets will remain in good condition over many decades, and it leverages public investment to initiate significant private development, with again that revenue from the private development offsetting the public infrastructure costs and spurring additional private development in the area. While the exact version of this P3 to be applied to this project has not been determined, the elements of a P3 can generally be organized under the acronym DBFOM. The city engages with a developer, who usually organizes a consortium of partner entities to support the project. The D and B are for design and build, standard and construction projects. Again, while being designed, the P3 considers the long-term maintenance of the building systems and finishes, avoiding decisions that would be costly down the road. The F is for financing, which likely would be handled privately by the development partner, but ultimately could still fall in the city's hands if that makes the most financial sense at the time. As you know, interest rates are all over the place right now, and so some of those areas are factors in making that decision at the time. The O and M are for operations and maintenance. So in some P3s, you might do a multi-decade, say 30-year, maintenance contract as part of the initial agreement. That would hold this development consortium to some standards for building maintenance. The O and M also may be a separate contract and/or for a shorter period, but generally the idea is to commit to a maintenance standard early on, so problems like you can see in the deterioration of the current central library don't develop. As the Planning Commission, I also want to spend a little time telling you about how this project incorporates other planning-related considerations and how it aligns with the downtown Burbank transit-oriented development-specific plan. So first of all, there are some historic considerations that are relevant in two areas. City Hall is a nationally-registered historic building. None of this project would touch City Hall, but there is potential for development on the adjacent parking lot and parking structure. So an assessment of potential impacts has pointed to some areas to be considered as part of any final design. The central library itself is turning 60 years old this month, and while it's not a historically designated building, the analysis showed that it does have some features that could make it eligible for historic consideration under local, state, and national law. So for that reason, those features will be considered as the project description is refined and potential project alternatives are identified with a developer. Someone comes down the line and has a way to save the building and reuse it in a way that works for everyone, that would be fantastic. Another area of research and analysis has been how the Surplus Land Act relates to this project. The Surplus Land Act, or SLA, is a state law enacted in 2019 that requires public agencies to carry out a process to offer their surplus property for the development of affordable housing before the property can be used for other purposes. In the case of the Civic Center project, the land is not currently surplus because right now it houses the current library, the Administrative Services Building, and surface and structure parking. Depending on how the project proceeds, private development components may require the city to incorporate an SLA process. So this will be considered as a possibility in all of the project timelines in order to ensure that we're complying with that law. And then finally, the downtown Burbank TOD-specific plan is making progress this year. This plan considers changes to land use designations, establishes objective development standards to streamline the development of housing, and considers infrastructure impacts of new housing in the specific plan area which this project is within. The infrastructure analysis is significant to the Civic Center project because the Civic Center project involves housing. It will create increased needs for water, power, and sewer capacity. The library itself, even being bigger, probably won't because our current building is deeply, deeply inefficient and being as old as it is. But the housing will create more demands. So in the downtown plan area entirely, there's the potential for over 9,000 new units of housing, and those impacts aren't unique to this project. So they're best considered as part of that whole analysis. And the downtown plan will also be looking at parking and traffic and how they're impacted by all of the new development. The downtown plan also, of course, contains a Program Environmental Impact Report, or EIR, which analyzes all of this information. So having that complete for the whole area should minimize any additional review required for this Civic Center project under the California Environmental Quality Act, commonly known as CEQA. As noted, the downtown plan also changes land use designations. The sites identified as potential sites for housing within the Civic Center project are not currently zoned for housing. So the Civic Center project will be proceeding on a timeline that's been aligned with the downtown TOD-specific plan timeline to ensure that critical milestones and approvals within that plan have been achieved, laying the path for the Civic Center to proceed. So what's next? Staff will continue to refine various analyses and considerations. In alignment with the downtown plan schedule, we anticipate that we will be going back to city council in fall of 2023 with a fully updated financial feasibility analysis and a recommendation to initiate the procurement stage of the project. The procurement will be multi-stage and will continue through the next few years. There will be additional opportunities for public input once a preferred development partner is selected and begins design as part of contract negotiations, and we are hoping that we could see the public assets open for use around 2027. So thank you for your attention, along with my colleagues in planning. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I just want to let you know about our project website, burbanciviccenter.com. On that website, along with information about the project, we have a survey that you can fill out, or you can encourage members of the community to fill out, to provide their input on various aspects of the project, and people can also sign up to receive project updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. We will now open the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the Planning Commission for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to Planning Division staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public that wish to comment by telephone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the Planning Commission. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us, as it may take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through. The line for callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver public comment. We'll wait a minute or two. Let me inquire if we have any cards completed by any members of the public.
We didn't receive any cards.
All right.
We have no callers.
Okay, thank you. There being no further public comment on this item, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments? Actually, you're from the library, not the Community Development, is that correct?
Yeah, no one from Community Development, but our Parks Director may, I mean, I'm sorry, our Library Director may want to think.
Yes.
No further comments, thank you.
Yeah, just following the script here. But I noticed typo. Would the representative, well, we did that part. All right, does the commission have any questions? Yes, Mr. Eric.
Just one question. In the report, you guys were talking about building parking structures. Is there a difference between building the parking structures versus doing subterranean parking? Because I know they already have subterranean on Orange Grove, just wondering.
Sure, the parking that's for the public uses of this is likely to be at least partially subterranean since we're trying to use all the surface area for the human uses for the buildings and for the open space, and then for the residential, it may be above-ground parking podiums. But none of that's been 100% determined yet, but we are trying to, just as a general planning principle, trying to keep the the street level area available for pedestrians, bicycling, entering the buildings, events, things like that.
Maximize surface level, yeah. Okay, thank you, that was it. Thank you for the report.
Yes, Ms. Wick.
Just a quick question. Full disclosure, I love the central library, and I think it's such a great example of mid-century architecture, but as much as it pains me to say, I understand that the needs of library services have changed very much since the pandemic, and especially over the pandemic. What do you foresee, because it is such a great architectural resource, what do you see, how do you see reusing that building if possible, and what would need to be done to that building to make it up to snuff? I know that you said asbestos and some other things, so what's going on? What is it to fix it, and what potential does it have for the future?
Sure. Well, the analysis we did was about reusing it as a library, so not all of that would apply, but I can let you know that yes, there's asbestos and lead paint in the building. It's not up to the current seismic code, and well, if you've used, you use the inside too, or you, okay, because some people just drive by and love it, so no, no judgment. But for example, the elevator is really small and it's in the back because in 1963, they never thought the public would use it, and we technically have ADA restrooms, but they're not comfortable for people on scooters or, you know, a lot of other modern needs that we have. So to bring it up to both the code and the standards of a library would be very expensive. All that hazardous materials remediation and the seismic would need to be done regardless. So really, what would need to happen would be if someone came along with an idea for reusing it. There's all sorts of amazing ideas out there about buildings that have been repurposed in various ways, that range from the whole building to preserving part of the facade or echoing certain features in a new building. The things that, from all the conversations I've had with people in the community, what people do tend to think of is really just two of the external walls along Glen Oaks and along Olive. The other two walls are just bricks. No one sees them, but they're not very exciting. And the inside, most of the features have been covered up over the years, or they're not as distinct for that style. So I think the city is open to any ideas or possibilities that come along the way. Ultimately, this project right now, the financing, we're looking at those ground leases to help offset the costs, so that would be an important piece of the puzzle too, whether that could be done on that site while preserving part of the building or other ideas that come down the road from developers.
Commissioner, if I may, Vice Chair, just to add, we're going through the process of the specific plan, so part of it includes a programmatic EIR. Some of the points that Ms. Goldman mentioned will be looked at as part of the specific plan process, so if there's any possibility of adaptive reuse of it per the Secretary of Interior Standards, clearly that would be beneficial, but we're looking at all options, including those that, if for whatever reason we can't preserve the structure, what is the process you would go through? So a lot of it has to do with kind of weighing what the benefits of the project are versus the potential impacts, because we can attempt to save something as well-intentioned as we can, but if it just becomes financially infeasible to do so at the expense of the larger project, that's something that the commission would be hearing about at future meetings for individual projects as well as for the specific plan as a whole, and then the council ultimately would be considering the specific plan as well as the project that Ms. Goldman is presenting to you. So there's a lot of things, there's a lot of variables. I think we're going into it with the best of intentions to see how we can preserve as much of the resources while introducing many of the amenities that Ms. Goldman noted that are of quite a big interest to the community as a whole. So everybody's really excited about the project, and at this point, you know, thanking Ms. Goldman for bringing it forward to you all to give you kind of an introduction to it, and you can kind of be thinking about this project as a specific plan comes back to you beyond just an update, and you're considering development standards and see how those match up.
I just have one more question, if that's okay. Sorry. And this is, I understand that this is like a, we're doing like a big-picture presentation, and this is a very nuanced question. It's just more of like a personal curiosity question, so thank you for indulging me. I know right now, in terms of library services, that the Buena Vista branch is the one that, I believe they're the only branch that's open on Sunday, and it seems to me that that's the branch with the most resources available, whereas the central branch is our central branch and lagging. And I personally feel that just since it is downtown, the community would get the most use out of it. Do you anticipate opening up the hours of operation to be more than the Buena Vista branch or on par with it? I know that's like a very small question in a very big picture, just out of curiosity.
No, that's a great question, thank you. The difference in the hours right now between the two branches is actually just Sunday. What expanded beyond the four hours a day on Sunday is to be determined, but you're right, the Buena Vista library, even though it is smaller than the central library, has higher usage right now, and that's because it's a much more modern space. It feels nice to be in it. It's also got a lovely little toddler playground next to it and ample parking, and those are some of the things that we're lacking at the central library. But the Buena Vista library, when it opened in 2002, the city staff at the time believed that it would see a spike in usage and then it would come back down, and that never really happened. and then it would come back down, and that never really happened. That library is, every seat in it is full all day, and people are lined up. So it can't really, it can't really sustain that on its own. And so the Central Library, both being a nicer, like, for instance, we have no natural light at the current Central Library. So if there were some natural light, there were some outlets. That's one of our biggest, and meeting rooms and study rooms. It won't so much be packing more books in, but the demand is really for space for people to be in. And so we're hoping that we can just kind of balance out the system as a whole by having this modern Central Library.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm one of those people that lines up to try to get a table at the library frequently. I, in my own mind, can't overemphasize the importance of a library to the identity of a community. It is the cultural nexus. It's like the old-style cathedrals in Middle Eastern Europe. That's where people gather. That's the energy of the community. I guess my focus on this, and it's a little overwhelming for you, because there's so much, I really believe that the library project should be a separate project that takes priority over everything else. It is the driver, it is going to be the driver for the development. It is going to be the place where people go. And it's a destination thing. And when you have a destination property, that means it's important. And it is going to be the energy that's going to drive the development, okay? So I, I guess, why isn't the library portion of this carved out and given special priority? It really, I mean, I, I, again, my only reference is New York City, where we did a lot of this stuff. And we learned that there are things that you have to put in place for civilization to come, okay? You can build the apartments, but if you don't have a dry cleaner, and you don't have a place to buy a quart of milk in the end of the day, it's not going to work, okay? The library, as I said, I know I'm harping on this, it is incredibly important to defining the area. I really believe that the library project, portion of this, the phase of this thing, should be prioritized. It should be the first thing that's done, it's the first thing that should be, forget about creating the budgets for the other side. I really believe that the library aspect of this must be addressed. And I can't overemphasize that. I mean, it should not be mixed in with the rest of this. It is, to, to repeat myself, incredibly important to the development of the area. So my last comment, make it separate.
Thank you, I really appreciate those comments. And ultimately, the answer to your question is for City Council. But I can say, you know, as I mentioned, this project has been attempted many, many times over the years. And ultimately, I believe it's come down to funding and competing priorities. A library building is not cheap to build, among other things. Well, it's a public building, so you have to have all of the features for it to be used in all of those ways, as well as just even things like books are heavy, and so you have to have extra strength in floors. The, our idea now is that because the library on its own has not, has not been able to make it all the way through to an actual project over the years, we wanted to take this little bit of a broader look. And all the other items that are part of it are real needs, too. But I do, I do really appreciate your point there. And there's lots of studies that show the economic impact of new libraries and the impact on housing values when there's a new library in the neighborhood and, and all those other factors.
Right, the unique aspects in dealing with the development of a library building, it's like the same thing with developing a done grocery store planning and financing. You have no idea the complexity of building a supermarket, okay? And the same idea, to me, with a library, because it's not just books. I think you would agree with me that it's getting people in there, using the resources, having a class, you know, whatever it is. Suddenly having like a major screenwriter, because they're not doing anything right now, coming in and, you know, talking to people, that, that energy. And so, again, I really appreciate what you're doing, but I just, it's a separate project. It can't be mixed in with the others. It's got to have its own budget, its own appeal, its own driver. Somebody has to be set up as the czar, really, I believe that. It can't, it can't be part of the overall project, so. I'll see what I can do to get that point across. Thank you again.
All right, I have a few questions, Ms. Goldman. Thanks for the presentation. I just want to get some foundational things set up so I have a better understanding of how is it that we are here today in, in terms of a, a library? That's the, from my understanding, is the focus of this presentation. And how did we get from a library to four blocks, five blocks of development, including apartments and retail and other office, open space, and so forth? I got the gist of what you said earlier to Mr. Monaco's comments in terms of we couldn't get here, so we're looking at it in a broader sense. Now, I would like to explore as to why we couldn't get here. Measure L, you mentioned, at the beginning. We, Burbank sought some state funds, but it didn't happen. Do you have any information on that?
Well, that was before my time. Unfortunately, Measure, one of the issues with Measure L was the way the ballot measure was written. It really constrained the city to have, be able to find those particular matching funds. So it used to be that the state pretty regularly had grants for library construction. And I know after Measure L, the city applied in 2003 and 2004 and was not funded. I didn't, I wasn't in California at the time, so I can't speak to the exact priorities. But that opportunity has come back again now. And I know this time, just if there's any parallels, the focus is really on more impoverished communities. That would be less likely to be able to fund the project locally. That's one of the factors. After that, the state ceased to have that funding stream up until 2022. That was how long it took to come back at the state level. And even that coming back was the result of many, many years of lobbying at the state level to convince legislators that there was value in this. We have challenges with our building, but there are parts of the state that, where libraries are functioning in, in buildings that are truly in terrible condition and have barely any resources. So, so again, I can't speak to the details of why we didn't receive it, but it's possible if that had, that funding source had continued to exist, we would have been able to, you know, improve our application and get it in, in later years. But once it went away, there just wasn't an option to obtain that funding again until, until now. So in addition to that, I know that the, I know there was an effort to get some federal stimulus funding for the project in 2009 after the recession. I know there was an idea to do a much smaller version in 2011. And, and, you know, the, none of those projects honestly moved that far. There, I think it was the political landscape at the time. There was a recession in there, all sorts of challenges. Right now, there's the financial factor. There's also just looking at these pieces of land. So the council direction at the completion of our initial study, the vision study, was that the ideal, the council's preferred spot for the library was across the street on where the EV charging spaces are at the top corner of Glen Oaks and Olive. To move the library there, you could just build a building, but then that block becomes pretty dense. So the, then you would like, and the Administrative Services Building is also 60 years old and also in, in near failing condition. So this goes actually back to that plan development for the Civic Center in 2003. The idea then was the library on the corner, we're still looking at now, and an open space in the middle there. Then you're taking away the surface parking, so you need to build some parking. So those elements, it's pretty hard to pull the library out as just one of the elements, unless there were an option for us to re, a practical option to redevelop on the current site. And that lot is just a real challenge. There isn't really a way to build this bigger library and resolve the, some of the challenges we have, like lack of connection to the open space, lack of open space, lack of parking on that lot. So all of that, then, is the cost of a library plus these other factors. And ultimately, yes, there is, there is a version of this where the city could just issue debt for the whole project. That would take up a lot of the city's capacity. And as you may be aware, there's hundreds of millions of dollars of other unmet infrastructure needs in the city. So when Measure P was passed for that municipal infrastructure fund, the, it, it had a pretty big burden on it to do everything from street paving to annual maintenance on city buildings to projects like this. What we've tried to do as part of this is be responsible team players with all of these other city needs and recognize that, while there's a lot of support for the library project, there's also a lot of recreation centers and other buildings that need work, too. So we didn't want to take up all of that money or all of the city's debt capacity, if possible. And bringing in some revenue from the housing is really, really appears to be the best path to balance all of those needs out. Plus, the city has this commitment to build over 8,000 units as part of that regional, regional housing needs allocation for Burbank. And a lot of that is going to happen in this kind of downtown Civic Center area. So all in all, this project, you know, brings together a lot of different elements that support a lot of the different city council goals, and will also support each other. So you have a library near housing, then that's going to be a draw for the people who live there. It's going to provide supports for kids who are living there, adults who maybe are doing online training programs. The library is doing a lot more job training and support for entrepreneurs these days. So thinking about how we can use that as a small business center, connect with the San Fernando businesses, bring energy to the whole downtown. You know, it all kind of goes together really nicely, even if it does make the project have more elements and become a little more complex than a library on its own.
Well, that was a very nice overview, and I appreciate that. It gives us some insight, which kind of segues into my next question, which is Measure P. Well, 2018, today is 2023, let's say five years, give it a round number. How much money has Measure P raised? And how much money is in the kitty?
I'm not going to be able to give you a precise answer to that. However, the budget, budget meetings are starting at City Council this week and next. And May 16th is the Capital Improvement Program, which is funded out of there. So those numbers will be in there. And perhaps we can get, we can have, get those answers for you from Ms. Becker, our Financial Services Director, and send them to this group. But that, the, the, that's a quarter cent, three-quarter cent transaction and use tax, sales tax. And the revenue is split between, for the, for infrastructure and then general city needs. It's doing, it's quite healthy, Burbank, Burbank does have good revenue for that. But again, there are so many needs. So most of what you've seen as the results of that tax to date have, has been street paving. That was a top request from the community in preparation for that ballot measure. And that's where a lot of the focus has been. There's also been a number of other small projects. This one may end up being one of the first really visible projects to the public that's come out of that funding.
Yes, and, and I think unlike Los Angeles, we don't have potholes all over the place. So now, the other question I had was, the 45,000 square foot that's presently, you know, exists, and the proposal is 60,000 square feet. Now, that's just a jump of 25%. Now, how was that determination reached? How, how did someone say, well, you know what, we have 45,000 feet? What we really need is something 65,000 feet. Did someone do an analysis of what would that additional 25,000-foot space be? And how would that original 45,000-foot space be modified? And I'm not talking about a specific building. I'm talking about functionality.
Yeah, that was all part of that 2021 vision study. That was a large part of the work there, was to identify what really was the right size for the new library. So, for example, it looked at things like in the current library, the, there's more behind-the-scenes spaces than are necessary, because back in 1963, we did a lot of things manually that are now automated and don't require as much space, like cataloging of books. There's also a way larger mechanical room than you would need today and things like that. So even if we kept the same square footage in the, and we organized it, we'd be able to get some more space for the public. But in terms of what the community demands were, we did see that we needed extra space as well. One of the things we're lacking in the Central Library is study rooms. And then we only have three over at Buena Vista. There is a huge, huge demand for places where people can just be quiet and study or work, as well as, these days, we're also supporting people who have Zoom job interviews or need to be proctored for an online exam. And they need, they need spaces with that equipment. There's also a real lack of meeting room space in Burbank for community groups. And so another need that we're trying to meet in the building is to have, you know, various sizes of rooms that can be available at lots of different times of day, possibly even beyond when the library is open. And then just seating and different types of spaces. In the Central Library, we have a little mini pilot project of a space called the Spark Lab. That's digital media training for people who are learning the skills to work in our local media industry. And it's, you know, it's only 400 square feet right now. It's a great space, people are loving it. It's helping meet the goals of the project, which were to provide access to people. You know, there's some very expensive software and equipment involved there. So it's providing great access, but we really need a space that's several times larger. We don't have anywhere for kids to do homework after school. At the current Central Library, there's about four tables in the children's area, and they fill up like that as soon as school ends, and then that's just it. There's nowhere for kids to do their homework in that healthy setting. So, so all of that, there's, there's, there is, there is the need also, as I mentioned. You know, statistically speaking, we look at, we compare ourselves to some of the other libraries in the area that are, you know, the independent medium-sized cities like Glendale, Pasadena, Santa Monica, Torrance. And looking at our set of comparator libraries, if we look at our annual in-person uses, people who come onsite compared to our square footage, we are way under the average for this market area. So between those two, the determination was made that 65,000 square feet would be, keep the project financially feasible for the city and also meet as many of these needs as possible.
Thank you for that. Now, I wanted to ask about the, this P3 model. Why this model? What other models or options were considered before this model was recommended or rose to the top saying, oh, well, this is the best way to get our library?
The alternative to the P3 is really your more traditional construction project, where the city just issues the debt, and issues bonds or, or debt, and then identifies a contractor to do the design. Often, the design is one step of the process, and then that's bid out for construction. Sometimes there's, there's another model where that's done as a whole, and so that you can have some of these considerations about how, how one leads to the other. But generally, that, that's it. And then, once the building is done with construction, then the everyday operations, maintenance are turned over to the Public Works Department, like any other city building. And it's up to the city to ensure that there is a plan to keep the building up and maintain it over the years, which all municipalities, including Burbank, really struggle with. So that's the more traditional way to go, and there are lots of cities still doing that. The public-private partnership is a little bit of a newer concept to be applied to this type of project. It's more commonly used in really major infrastructure, like toll roads or ferries or subway systems, especially where there's some revenue stream. So our idea, our, our awareness of the P3 as a possible model came from Long Beach. And several of us went down there a few years ago and talked to the staff there about their experience. And, and it, it seemed like it was beneficial to the city to introduce this, this new way of looking at things because of that risk transfer I mentioned. So, so basically, there's a very, it's sort of more work upfront. There's more work for the city to identify exactly what our needs are and be able to speak them clearly. And even that exercise in and of itself can provide some benefits long-term. So there's fewer changes in the project along, along the way. But generally, it provides some potential benefits for the city on the financial risk front, from there being able to be, the money, the funding obtained privately, as well as, as well as looking at the long-term use as part of the original design. The housing is not, strictly speaking, the thing that makes this a public-private partnership, but that model is commonly used when you do have both public and private development sharing, sorry, sharing a site or sometimes a building. But that model is commonly used when you do have both public and private development sharing, sorry, sharing a site or sometimes a building. There's actually a lot of examples out there of smaller branch libraries that have housing built right on top of them in a lot of cities. So it's it's a model of growing interest, and and we believe it has some benefits to offer the city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Monaco?
Obviously, I'm taking a little bit of a personal interest in this. I really like the idea of the public private partnership. They do very well in a number of cases. But again, going back to the library, I think there's a different dynamic that has to be injected into it. And it is something that the whole city has to get behind. And I'm talking the the going everywhere to, you know, you can buy a brick for the hall for the walkway going up at whatever it is, twenty five thirty. You get somebody to put a mural. Again, each tile is, I mean, I'm just throwing things off the top of my head. But from the public private type setup, I I think it has to be a little bit of a hybrid there. And the dynamics, the energy has to be put into this project with the whole, every, the entire city has to have skin in this game because it's going to define who we are. Sorry, I'm getting frothed up on this, but I really believe that this is
Mr. Monaco, I see that you're very passionate about this. But, you know, let's let's do let's do this part during deliberation. If we have questions, we'll ask the questions. And then during deliberation, we'll all get passionate about it, which I'm going to get to. Anyway.
And I just will note, we we will plan, when we get further down the road, we will plan to do a capital campaign as well. And you're you're completely right. Libraries are for the people, and people want to be able to come in and see their name that they contributed to it, even if it was in a very small way. There will also be art in public places, opportunities for art, and hopefully some local art there and ways for ways to engage the young people in the community and the design process and things like that.
Any other questions? Okay, I now declare the public hearing closed, and the planning commission will now deliberate. What is the planning commission's pleasure? I know there's really nothing to move on, but I guess this is the time where you can, you know, let yes, indeed.
I I think I've made the point, and I think you understand that. It is a difference between the library and the cultural aspects to building commercial space and section eight housing or something like that, which has its own dynamic and own requirements. So I guess that's really the the only point I'm trying to make is there has to be individual energy, you know, a specific kind of energy that goes into this development of the library because, again, I don't want to, I'll stop now, but it's just, it's so critical as the underpinnings of the city as to who we are. Good luck.
I just wanted to say I think I've made my point, and I won't to respect everybody's time. Just, I really do think the central library is, this is going to be a great project. I'm very excited for it. If you would have asked me about it a couple of years ago, I would have probably threatened to like chain myself to the central library and say, no, no, save it, save it. And I hope it can be saved. I really, I really do. Because I and I understand that sometimes it cannot. But I really, really do hope that this is something, and I'm sure it will be something exciting for a part of town that is underserviced. And so I think that's I think that's exciting. I think the P three partnership is is interesting, and it will be good moving forward, given the fact that other methods failed and it is usually they are successful. So good luck. I can't wait to see another update.
Sure. I love the public library. I have a library card. Libby download a lot of audiobooks. I think that the P three model is a really great idea and a way for the city to pay for the public library in the future. So thank you for everything that you guys are working on.
Well, let me surprise you all. And I I'm not too keen on this P three business. Because wherever there's a risk, there's a reward. No one's going to do anything for free. So any developer coming in, if they're not going to make two, three times their money, they're not going to get involved in any of this. And I'm not, I don't know if you're planning to stay around Burbank for a while. But I can probably assure you by the time this project is completed and a shovel goes into the ground, I don't know if we're going to be around to see it. Because anything massive of this size with so many moving parts is going to lend itself to a lot of planning, a lot of discussions, a lot of talking, a lot of and and haggling. And I think if this project, this type of a massive, well, for Burbank, it's pretty big. A big project like this to go forward. I think the best way to push it forward quickly is to make sure that everyone understands all the mechanics going going into it upfront. What I mean by that? All the finances needs to be transparent. The question that I asked regarding, well, how much money is in Measure P? Well, we're going to find out. And why is it that some of that money cannot be allocated to just doing a library? And getting the project done sooner than the second grader being a high school graduate before it's over? So in that sense, I I don't think this is even feasible, to tell you the truth. It is a great idea. But all ideas, when you start putting it to paper, on paper, it looks very nice. But once you start the implementation, it becomes impossible. And if it is something that the community needs, which we've established, and we know, I think the focus should be, well, how do we deliver this to the community as quickly as possible? Not, let's do a two hundred unit here, a motel, a hotel here, an auditorium there, and then we'll do a library with it. So I I don't think this is the right approach to take. I think the approach should be, we need the library, let's get the library done. And a anytime you sit at the table with any stakeholder and you're saying, well, you know, why don't you pay for it? And then, you know, we'll 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 give you this for a little bit, and then we'll give you that for a little bit. You pay as that's a position of, it's a losing position proposition because you're negotiating from a position of weakness. You're asking someone to give you something that you're going to use over thirty years. Well, what kind of return do you think those people are going to ask you to put in? And who's paying at the end of the day? The community, the the citizens of Burbank are paying. Do they know what is going, what it's going to take to get a project like this? Does anyone have any idea? And are they able to explain it to the citizens? You know what? We're going to give you a library. But it's going to cost you instead of a sixty million dollars, it's going to cost you about three hundred and eighty million dollars. So I'm I'm definitely not with this P three business. Long Beach was a different scenario. You can see the buildings over there and the size of those buildings. That is not what we have here, and it's not comparable. So it's a nice idea, but I think the focus should be, let's get a library for the kids. And let's worry about these other elements. We can always play around with those other elements. A developer will also will jump at the chance of, you know, let me get this piece of land for so many dollars a year. And 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 I'll pay you back so much every year, leases, blah, 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 whatever. But at least we would be in a better position to negotiate versus, well, give us about sixty million dollars. But on the other side, we're giving up three hundred million dollars. I'm throwing numbers out, but I think I'm about right with those numbers. I think I'm pretty close with those numbers. So anyway, that that's my little piece of wisdom on this. And but we do appreciate you coming down and explaining it to us and shedding some light on some of the foundational issues that that are percolating here. So thank you. Now is the time and place for the planning commission to consider a report on the Golden State Specific Plan and Association General Plan Amendment. I think that's what that word is. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the report for us?
Good evening, Vice Chair and members of the Planning Commission. I have to get used to that. I used to be Planning Board before. I think it's my first time back since then. Could I please have the presentation? Thank you. So again, good evening, everyone, and also good evening to the members of the public. My name is Daniel V., and I am a senior planner with the city's Community Development Department. A quick overview of the presentation. I will begin the discussion with some background on the specific plan and will then go over the product schedule as well as the proposed land use approach. I will also go over and conclude with a discussion on two product alternatives that we're looking at, as well as next steps for the specific plan. Let's begin with some quick background. Preparation of the Golden State Specific Plan is included as an implementation program in the Burbank twenty thirty five general plan. To complete this implementation program in twenty sixteen, the city secured grant funding from the California High Speed Rail Authority and also Metro to begin work on the specific plan. The project was initiated in twenty sixteen. Since initiation, staff has made continual progress on the project. However, there have been pauses along the way that have led to the extended timeline. These pauses were initially related to limited staff resources and more recently have been related to ongoing coordination with other long range planning efforts. It is noteworthy to state that in twenty eighteen, the city council set a goal to facilitate for twelve thousand residential units by twenty thirty five. As part of this goal, the specific plan area was identified by the council as a housing priority area. Additionally, last year, the city council approved the city's twenty twenty one through twenty twenty nine housing element. Seven of the housing element opportunity sites are within this specific plan area. With that, let's quickly go over the specific plan area boundaries. The specific plan area is located south and east of the Hollywood Burbank Airport. It is not downtown Burbank, just to avoid the confusion, and is generally bounded by Cohasset Street and the Interstate five freeway to the north, Buena Vista Street to the east, Van Owen Street, and Pacific Avenue to the south, and the Hollywood Burbank Airport to the west. It includes land zone for industrial, commercial, and residential uses. The specific plan area includes several regional mobility assets such as two metro link stations, the Hollywood Burbank Airport, the replacement airport terminal, which is currently going through through the review process, eventually going into plan check, and also a proposed high speed rail station. Another thing to keep in mind is that the area is in close proximity to an airport. Because the specific plan area is adjacent to the Hollywood Burbank Airport, we have to be cognizant of airport adjacent land use restrictions, some of which include limiting development and uses within runway protection zones and also areas with high levels of aircraft related noise. One last piece of background, over the past five to eight years, the specific plan area has seen an interest in the redevelopment of property. The image on this slide includes projects that have been submitted for city review over the past five to eight years. Some of the projects like Avion Burbank, MSG Sphere Studios, and the redevelopment of the former Fries site have been previously approved. Let's now talk about the product schedule. Work on the specific plan has been divided into five phases. Phase one is the discovery phase, during which we gained an understanding of existing conditions. This has been completed. Phase two is the visioning phase, during which a vision, guiding principles, and a draft plan framework were developed. This has also been completed. Phase three is the alternatives and plan preparation phase. We are currently in this phase. A draft of the specific plan document and environmental analysis is currently being prepared. We anticipate work for phase three to run through fall of this year. Phase four is a public review phase. During this phase, we will release draft documents for public review and comment. We anticipate reaching this phase again fall of this year. And finally, there is phase five, the adoption and implementation phase. During this phase, we will be coming before the planning commission and city council with a final plan and environmental analysis. This is scheduled for first quarter of twenty twenty four. Throughout each phase of the project, we have and will continue to keep the council, planning commission, and public involved through several engagement strategies that include but are not limited to public workshops, reports to council, and presentations to the several boards and commissions, including this planning commission. As mentioned, the vision and a vision has been established for the project. It states that the Golden State area should be a vibrant economic center and transportation hub that facilitates a preservation of existing key industries while creating new opportunities for housing and jobs with an elevated sense of arrival from the Hollywood Burbank Airport, metro link stations, and proposed high speed rail station. Guiding principles were also established to support the vision. Exhibit B of staff's report includes these, an expanded version of each guiding principle. They generally include to build neighborhoods, support a mix of housing types and unit sizes, improve safe multimodal connections, create well designed neighborhoods, foster a resilient, sustainable district, balance jobs and housing, leverage transportation assets, support the district as an economic engine, encourage a unique district identity, and support the airport. These will, something to note, these will be slightly updated to include feedback received from the city council at the April twenty fifth city council meeting. As part of phase two, a plan framework was established that includes proposed land uses. However, before looking at the proposed land uses, let's look at existing conditions. This is the existing land use plan for the area. A couple of things to note. There is an existing residential neighborhood located north of Empire Avenue. A majority of the specific plan area is currently designated as commercial, as Golden State Commercial Industrial, a designation that is intended to support the industrial history of the neighborhood while also introducing compatible commercial uses. There is a pocket of the area currently designated as Regional Commercial in red. It is important to note that right now, most of the area is zoned general industrial and has zoning regulations aimed at facilitating industrial activity. This is a proposed land use plan. The plan aims to strike the balance between maintaining the existing character of the area while still facilitating for the community's vision and goals moving forward. This is done by limiting the changes proposed to the existing high density and low density residential neighborhoods, facilitating for residential development within a half mile of the metro link stations, the proposed high speed rail station, and along major corridors, accommodating for a balanced mix of commercial and industrial uses, including neighborhood serving uses, and also by planning in a manner that is cognizant of, again, existing airport adjacency land use restrictions. The areas in brown and yellow are the existing residential neighborhoods. The areas in purple are areas in which we, in which mixed use residential would be envisioned. And the areas in blue and red are areas where we could see a mix of commercial and industrial. All right, so what does this all mean for the area? Those areas we envision, in which we envision higher density mixed use residential are identified in purple. In these areas, we envision development that can reach up to a hundred and twenty dwelling units per acre. These properties are all within a half mile metro link stations and the proposed high speed rail station. This is what developing can look like in this area. It would include mixed use residential neighborhoods that are pedestrian oriented and in close proximity to transit. Those areas where we envision mid density mixed use residential are identified. Now they're identified on the screen in magenta. In these areas, we envision that development can range between fifty eight to a hundred dwelling units per acre. These properties are generally within major corridors such as Empire Avenue. And this is what development can look like in these areas. It would include smaller scale mixed use residential residential development that supports live work through residential infill and ground floor commercial. Moving on to the next slide, the areas identified on the screen in peach would be areas where we envision commercial development. Residential would not be permitted. This is what developing can look like. This is what development can look like in this area. It would include medium scale commercial development that maximizes the use of publicly accessible open space. And again, residential would not be permitted. Now let's talk about industrial leave zone property. The areas identified on the screen in light blue would be areas where we envision industrial uses. Additionally, the area in dark blue identified as Additionally, the area in dark blue, identified as the Makers District, would be an area where we would facilitate for neighborhood-serving uses that can serve both the employment sector and residents of the area. In this area, residential would not be permitted. This is what development can look like in this area. It would include industrial compatible media uses as well as neighborhood-serving uses within, again, the identified Makers District. And then finally, there are existing residential neighborhoods in the study area. These areas would generally remain the same or unchanged, and they're identified on the screen in orange, darker orange and light orange. And this is what development can look like in this area. It would include single-family and multifamily development that is complementary to the existing neighborhood and includes a mix of housing, and includes a mix of housing types and affordability. All right, so what does this all mean specifically when looking at it through the lens of total net new development? So we forecasted two different scenarios. The first scenario is what would happen if development occurred at the densities and floor areas that we envision in our city standards and also our general plan. In this scenario, we forecasted a total of 6,897 net new residential units and just north of 3 million square feet of net new non-residential floor area built out in the Golden State area by 2035. On the image, you see properties where some of this development is already proposed. You also see opportunity sites where we believe some of the development may occur. So moving on to the second scenario, the second scenario is what would happen if development requested, that is scenario one, but also on top of that, they requested density bonuses as allowed under state regulations. So why are we looking at this scenario? We are looking at it because a number of recent housing projects that have come before the Planning Commission, the city council, they've actually requested these types of density increases. In this scenario, we forecasted a total of 9,047 net new residential units and just north of 3 million square feet of net new non-residential floor area, again, built out by 2035. Having gone over the land use approach and also the forecasted build-out, let's quickly go over next steps. As stated, we are currently in phase three of the project. We are working on draft documents that will be made available for public review fall of this year. We anticipate having a final plan and environmental analysis before the Planning Commission and city council first quarter of 2024. These are some of the upcoming major milestones. We will have a public re-engagement workshop in June, followed by a city council study session on mobility in July. And those dates are to be determined, however, I'm almost certain, but to be confirmed over the next week, that the public workshop in June will occur June 21st. All right, so just a quick conclusion. Staff anticipates, again, having a plan ready for Planning Commission and city council consideration and potential adoption first quarter of 2024. Again, we've ran development forecast to assume projected growth in the study area. We've gone through the numbers, however, they are also included in the slide on the screen and also in staff's report. And again, there is an outreach event scheduled for, as of today, June 21st of 2023. The slide on the screen includes my contact information in case anyone from the public has any comments and their questions they want to share with me. With that, that concludes my presentation. Myself and also the planning team are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elvira. We will now open the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the Planning Commission for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to Planning Division staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public that wish to comment by telephone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the Planning Commission. Calls will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver public comment. Oh, wait a minute. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers here tonight or callers on the line for public comment?
No callers or speakers.
Thank you. There being no further public comment on this item, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
No further comments, thank you.
Does the commission have any questions of staff?
Quick definition, what is a runway protection zone?
Great question. So if I can, please have the presentation back on the screen. Let me go to that slide really quick.
Because I noticed that, I think, the Frye site. Leave it back to you.
Yes, so, so quick, great question. Let me just go through it really quickly. So runway protection zones, so airports, for example, in this case, the Hollywood Burbank Airport, they have runways or areas where, that are designated as areas where airplanes land and take off. So whenever you have those areas, there are actual FAA standards and there are actual protection zones identified with those standards that in, that generally speaking have to, in which cities have to limit land uses, given potential hazards associated with having either airplanes run through the runway by accident or because of an unforeseen circumstance, something like that. So the intent behind runway protection zones is to identify areas where cities have to, to be a little bit more aware of uses going in those areas to minimize potential hazards down the line that could happen if there are accidents. And on the screen, you will identify, you will see those areas in blue. Please note that these areas, that these are approximate areas. The actual, exact protection zones will be in the future city documents and future city presentations.
Quick question. Does a general plan trigger any kind of environmental review, or is it just specific projects?
So, so in this case, I guess just to focus it a little bit on the project itself, or I guess I'll answer it two ways. So when the general, whenever the general plan is updated, that is considered a project under CEQA, and therefore we do have to undertake environmental analysis. In this specific case, the general plan, which was approved in, I believe, 2012, 2013, that general plan did have its own environmental assessment undertaken for that project. However, separate from that, this specific plan, which is, I guess if you look at it through, through the lens of like hierarchy, like you have the general plan, which in essence establishes a whole vision for an entire city, that general plan has a number of implementation programs that are in place so that that general plan can, can, can be implemented or can, in essence, achieve its full vision. One of those implementation programs is actually this project. So when the city council approved the general plan in 2012, 2013, they also approved policy stating we should have a specific plan for this area, so let's work on it. Since then, we've actually began the process of working through the plan. Now we're hopefully on the later stages of the process, getting through it. And as part of this project, we are undertaking an environmental assessment. So that assessment is going to look at vehicles' miles traveled, traffic, noise, air quality, historic, historic resources, is going to look at the whole, a whole, whole menu of environmental topical areas that we have to look at for these types of projects.
Okay. What about soil and water, because we all know what's been in Burbank before?
Great question. So yes, so there, so under CEQA, there, there, we do have to look at soil. There is an actual soils section in, in the environmental documents, and as part of that, we are going to be looking at whether or not there is contamination on site. There is also a hazard, a hazard section that, through which we also look at that. So the environmental assessment that we, that we're working through and will eventually make available to the public is, in essence, going to look at all of that, including any potential contamination that the public has made us aware of in the past and that we are aware of through studies we've undertaken. And all of that would be, in essence, disclosed to the public, to the council members, all decision-makers, and staff as part of that process will identify whether or not there has to be any sort of, whether, whether there has to be mitigation measures to be able to account for any potential impacts.
Got it. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, for instance, where there's mixed-use corridors that could potentially be retail and everything like that. It's, the Golden State Specific Plan and the projects are not necessarily contingent upon a satisfactory environmental impact report. It's basically just having the information, and then the council Planning Commission decides what they want to do with it. And then would the individual projects also trigger an EIR under CEQA or?
So I could, I'll start with the answer, and then if I miss something, our city planner and planning manager can add on. So in essence, it is, this is what we call programmatic EIR. So the programmatic EIR, program EIR, it is going to, in essence, look at the, the impacts of what we are planning for. In this case, we're planning for, in one scenario, just north of 6,000 new units and 3 million square feet of net new development, the other scenario, a little bit more than that. And in essence, in the future, products come in and they're complying with those requirements, they would, they may have to take some additional environmental assessment for focused areas, but a lot of it would have been covered. Having said that, something to keep in mind too, and it's something that we, that was brought up at the city council meeting on April 25th, is there are examples of, like the, the fact that there is contamination on a site does not mean that you cannot have residential. It does not mean that you cannot have retail. Examples of that can be seen with the Empire Center, right? When the Empire Center was approved in, I believe it was late 1990s or maybe early 2000s, there was an assessment done. As part of that assessment, it was established that there was contamination, and there was also remediation associated with that, right? So over the past number of years, there's been remediation of the soil, and it was established that that development can go in, and it's been there operational for the past 20-some years, right? Separate from that, there's been more recent examples. One of the more, more recent ones, I would say, is the Frye's development. The Frye's development came in, they are generally in the Golden State, or they are within the Golden State area, just south of the metro link station on Empire or Van Owen. And that's another example of how we went through a process through which they applied for housing. We went through the, through the appropriate environmental processes, and through that established that there could be residential there. They had to, again, undertake, I believe, certain remediation of the, of the property. However, that project approval was subject to that, right? Or was, it was conditioned based on that, and it is something that they would have to do. So there are examples of housing being built in the Golden State area. However, to your point, as part of the environmental assessment that we're doing for Golden State, we are going to provide that as full disclosure, and we are going to identify that either certain things have to be done for developments to occur, or that, to your point, in the future, products do come in, they may have to do further environmental assessments. So all of that will be fully disclosed for the council, the public to, to be able to look at, understand, and we'll be here as a resource to try to provide all the information as easily accessible to everyone.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying all that. I appreciate it.
Just, just one thing to add to that, and he did, Mr. V. did a very good overall assessment. In an optimal situation, based on some of the grant funds that we received for the specific plans, is we, we are looking at trying to streamline the development of housing. So the environmental document is one of those tools that you can, in essence, tear off of, a very comprehensive assessment, which is what we, I think, will be the end product. So the hope is that we fully disclose every and all issues, address those where they can be mitigated to facilitate the building of housing. So in an optimal situation, we would have a process where the environmental document has laid all the foundational work to facilitate the building and has accounted for any potential mitigation measures that need to be incorporated into the project, whether they're project design features or, or follow-up mitigation. So in a perfect world, we, we'd have that, and we could just move forward with the project. If there's anything that's missing or hasn't been addressed within the larger programmatic EIR, then those individual issues would have to be addressed as part of the project CEQA review.
Mr. Elrick?
A couple of questions. I saw there are currently three open space areas in the plan, and I was wondering if you guys had looked at making up some more open space, because you're adding, in one, it says 6,897, and then the other says 9,047. So I know that the developers will have to build some open space, but that's not for the public, the general public, to use. So if these people don't want to hang out in this piece of grass that, you know, that the developers have developed in their, on their property, and they decide to go to their, the three open spaces, like how is that going to impact? And have you guys thought about creating more open space and, and recreation areas?
Yeah, no, great question, Commissioner. And if I can have the PowerPoint on the screen again, I'm going to go to one of the land use slide, just so that we can, I'll, I'll kind of just visualize those areas, right?
Yeah.
And they may not have heard me. Can I please have the presentation on the screen again? If it doesn't, oh, there it is. We'll use this one. I think they're, they're both the same, generally, when it comes to open space. But yeah, so one of the things you've identified is the limited amount of open space, right? You have three parks that, that have quite, they, they have some open space, but you are right, we're adding potentially 6,000, 9,000 more residential units. That means you're going to have more people, more families, right? We need to recreate. So one of the challenges is that we, the city, don't actually own a lot of property within this area. So when you don't own a lot of the property, the question becomes, how could you, how could you create that open space? So you, you hit on one of the, of the main tools cities commonly use, and one of the things that we want to use in this area, which is, as part of private development, we're going to require through objective standards that developers provide open space, both that is privately, private open space, privately accessible to the tenants, but in, in many cases, hopefully also publicly accessible, and hopefully substantial. Having said that, we have talked about other ideas that we're looking into further. For example, in this area, you have a number of developments currently proposed, also maybe that will be proposed in the future, that have a lot of rooftop area and maybe parking structures. So the question becomes, how could you utilize, how could you maybe reuse some of that area or maybe dual-use some of those areas to create different options for maybe non-typical open space? And one of the other things I'll share is that there is a, a proposed high-speed rail station in this area, and that high-speed rail station, just as a point of reference, is on this, it is on the screen. So it is generally located where the current Avion development has been built. If that ever does come to fruition, at that point in the game, we, we do anticipate having policy in the specific plan, highly encouraging any development on that side to incorporate open space. The end goal being that we're hoping to see, we're, we're hoping to take all opportunities we can, as property is being reused, to be able to maximize use of open space, whether it's private or public. And beyond that, we're also hoping to take opportunities of, of maybe underutilized existing resources, such as parking garages or parking lots, to be able to, to have a dual-use of those lots. Having said that, we are still planning on having active conversations with our Parks and Recreation Division to identify how we can, using their experience, maximize our opportunities, right? I hope that provides an answer.
Commissioner Elrick, if I can add the, an early example, and one of the things Mr. V. is working on with the consultant team, is to kind of further codify a lot of the things that in the past we've been able to negotiate with developers. The first street, I mean, the Frye's project, I'm not sure if you were here on the commission when it came, but I know Mr. Atticanian was, and one of the things that was incorporated into that project was a bike path through the property that connects the residential neighborhood south of the site to the metro link station. In addition to that, there's large open spaces areas that kind of run east to west across the property. So in those instances, those are also accessible to the public. So the, I know many times we think of a lot of these developments of kind of being pretty insulated and, you know, not being accessible. And one of the things Mr. V. is also working on is a hotel project in the area, and some of the things that we're looking at there is to provide a lot more open space that's accessible by the public, so you don't actually have to go into the property proper, like the most interior portions, but that as you're walking along the frontage, you're able to have spaces where maybe people can, in essence, stop and sit and contemplate and be under shade and whatnot. So the idea is to try to maximize that throughout the site. So instead of getting one large park space, which I guess the example would be if Avion were to redevelop with high-speed rail, we've been in discussions with them about those areas, if you're going to put an underground station, and a lot of the upper area is consolidated for parking and other uses, are there opportunities to create more open spaces? are there opportunities to create more open space in that area? So not only with like a state agency, but we're looking at that with individual development. So Danny mentioned a very unique concept, but some that you've seen maybe in movies, but then also if you've traveled in Japan where people have soccer fields on the top of rooftops and whatnot. So even that is something that's been talked about because there was, I believe, an interest when this project first came to be where we had a lot of people talk about, well, we need more soccer fields. And, you know, you have soccer fields that are open. You also have indoor soccer fields that are quite in vogue as well in certain parts of the city. So we're looking at, everything's on the table. We're looking at all these different options. I think we're also looking at how we think of streets and sidewalks as being linear parks that connect to these other areas. So if you've had a chance to walk through there, right now, the current infrastructure is pretty inhospitable. In some instances, you have poles in the middle of a sidewalk. If you're with the stroller, you literally either try to scoot by against a fence or building, or you're almost in the public right of way. So a lot of those things are things that Mr. Villa and the team are looking at.
Great. And also the recreation areas. I know we have like commercial recreation areas and the state is coming and taking them away from us. Is there anything in the plan that, that you guys looked at that could potentially be commercial recreation? Because I know there's like open space and you know, a chance for a business to actually have a recreational area and for people to gather and...
So one of the things that we are looking at, I don't know this is maybe getting at what you asked, but for example, right now, in our objective development standards for, say, commercial, commercial uses, say you're building an office building or a hotel or something like that, we don't actually have objective standards requiring open space for those types of uses, right? So we are looking at establishing something like that to be able to create pockets of open space within developments, maybe where people can recreate outside of maybe your typical open spaces that are publicly accessible. When it comes to, to, I don't know, I hope, does that answer your question? I'm not sure if that's what you were getting at.
No, I was just wondering if you guys have made any room for commercial recreation spaces or thought about making room for commercial recreation spaces?
Commissioner Elrich, maybe if you can help elaborate so that we kind of understand a little bit better. Are you looking at like specific venues that could come in, like indoor, indoor, rock climbing, things like that?
Things like that, yeah.
Okay, no, thank you for that clarification. So as of now, we have not looked at a specific commercial recreation zone in the specific planning area. However, it is something that we can explore further, just as we keep going through the planning effort, just to identify whether we can maybe encourage those types of uses coming in to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I now declare the public hearing closed and the planning commission will now deliberate. What is the planning commission's pleasure? Obviously, we, go ahead. If anyone has any comments at this point.
I'd just like to thank you for the report. You guys are doing a good job. And those are a lot of units. But I know we have to put them in, so thank you.
Ms. Villa, as always, you've done a superb job and in-depth analysis. You got your hands full and wish you and everyone that's working on this a lot of luck. Now is the time for oral communication from the public. Any person speaking during this period may address the commission on any matter concerning city business. Each person may address the planning commission for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to planning division staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public that wish to comment by telephone, please call 1-8238-3335 to address the planning commission. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. Phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as it may take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through the line. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver public comment. Well, wait a minute. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers here tonight or callers on the line for public comment? Thank you. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for the commission to receive Brown Act and Public Records Act training from the city attorney. Will the city attorney please introduce yourself and begin the presentation?
Good evening, commissioners. I decided to move over here so that you're not all training your neck to see me. My name is Lisa Curihara and I am a senior assistant city attorney here for our city. And tonight, we are going to talk about the Brown Act. If I can please get the presentation up, thank you so much. I know some of you are very seasoned commissioners. Some of you have served on boards and commissions before. Some of you have sat through a similar training very recently. But this is all part of a citywide training effort to sort of refresh everybody's memory on what the Brown Act is, how it governs our public meeting processes, as well as to help you sort of issue spot potential red flags when you may or may not find yourself coming up in one of these sticky situations. You know, there's going to be a lot of information that we go over tonight. It is a training, so I encourage you to be collaborative. And if you have questions, feel free to raise your hand and I'm happy to answer as we go along. There's also a point at the end where we'll have a Q and A period. But anyhow, with that, the agenda for our training this evening, we're going to go over the purpose of the Brown Act, the types of legislative bodies who are covered. There are really three components that the Brown Act governs, procedures for our meetings, agenda requirements, as well as public access to our meetings. And then we'll talk about a few other related issues at the very end. So with that, let's go ahead and begin. Oh, I have to caveat. I don't know if you all heard me earlier, but we tried to include some fun graphics in here. They're all Simpsons related. I have to totally disclose that I've never seen an episode of The Simpsons. I'm going to work on that. I know, I know. So you may have to, I know, you may have to educate me on some of these references. But so the general purpose of the Brown Act is to guarantee transparency in the public meeting process. It guarantees the public right to attend and participate in meetings of local legislative bodies. It is a state law. It is one of what we commonly refer to as our sunshine laws. The Public Records Act is our other state sunshine law, which guarantees transparency in government deliberations. And so here we have what looks like a chicken wing and it looks like it's cleaning some glass to make it more transparent. I don't know. Think about this reference as you think about what the Brown Act means. And so what we really want to avoid is this idea of a secret meeting. And so here's hopefully a fun clip of something that we would not want to happen in our legislative proceedings.
That's odd. Why are all those cars parked at City Hall?
Ay caramba!
Welcome to this secret meeting made possible by the fake disaster drill. And now for the reason we are here. The results are in. This town has voted unanimously to get rid of Springfield's unending nightmare, The Simpsons.
So we would never want someone who is the subject of a meeting to not know that a meeting is occurring so that they could not come and give their opinions and their public comments. And so the Brown Act ensures that we do not have secret meetings in our local legislative process. Now, before we kind of get into the meat of the law, I do have to caution, we sometimes talk about this in a vacuum and we don't really talk about what the consequences are. Luckily, we don't engage in Brown Act violations very often, so you don't see the consequences oftentimes in real life. But any member of the public could bring a civil lawsuit to overturn an action that's taken in violation of the Brown Act. And what happens in those instances if, if we are found to have violated the law, the city is responsible for paying the other side's attorney's fees. So it can become a very expensive mistake to correct. In addition to that, if the individual who participated in the Brown Act violation willfully intended to deprive the public of public information, you could face personal criminal liability. And that means misdemeanor charges go on your criminal record. It's obviously a stain on your public, you know, official record and we would never want any of you to be in that position. So I just say these things to forewarn you that there are real-world consequences to violation of the law and hopefully by attending this training, we never get ourselves into that situation. So the basic rule of the Brown Act is that all meetings of legislative bodies of a local agency must be open and public. And any member of the public shall be permitted to attend any meeting of these legislative bodies except as otherwise provided in the law. And so we're going to break down all of these different definitions over the next few slides. Generally speaking, the Brown Act is broadly construed. So the definition of a meeting is broadly construed. The definition of what is open and public, you know, and who is allowed to attend, we construe it broadly to facilitate public access. So the types of legislative bodies that are covered by the Brown Act include any of our council-created boards or commissions, city council, obviously here, the planning commission, as well as certain subcommittees of boards and commissions, which I'll talk about a little bit later. There are instances, I just want to mention, where private boards can be subject to the Brown Act. It's not very common, but it usually happens if the private entity is somehow funded by the city and created by a city legislative body and delegated some sort of public authority. And so again, I don't know that there are many I can think of off the top of my head where I've encountered that, but if you see it and you're kind of wondering, why is this private board, you know, applying Brown Act rules? That could be why. So the definition of a meeting is very broad. It means any gathering of a majority of the members of the legislative body at the same time and location to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item that is within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. And like I said, this definition is pretty broad. So here, pretty obvious, a majority of you is three out of the five. Note that same time and location is not necessarily limited to same physical location. We will kind of vet this out a little bit further. But the important thing to remember is that you could engage in what's considered a Brown Act meeting, even if you're just listening to information that is within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. You don't have to actually take action in order for a conversation or discussion to be subject to the Brown Act. If you are even hearing information that normally is within the commission's jurisdiction and a majority of you are present, that is a meeting that should be open and public. So briefly, I just wanted to mention the planning commission essentially is empowered through both the Burbank Municipal Code, the city charter, as well as state law. Planning commissions are somewhat unique in that you are delegated authority to implement, typically to implement local and state planning and zoning laws. Some of our boards and commissions are simply created by ordinance and they have a very limited purview. But as you know, there are a lot of areas within our zoning code that delegate authority to the planning commission and require your input either to approve projects or to hear and make recommendations to the city council. So as I said, the definition of a meeting is quite broad. And there are instances where you can inadvertently enter into this world of what's considered an informal meeting, but it is subject to the Brown Act. And so I want to make you aware of these instances and when they can happen so that if you find yourself in a situation, you can say, wait, timeout, we actually have to have this discussion on Monday night at the planning commission because I realize that a majority of us have participated. So the first type of informal meeting that you need to be cautious of is what we've sort of termed the daisy chain. And in this graphic, you can see Mo is whispering something to Homer. Homer whispers that information to Lisa and Lisa whispers that information to Janie. And if you assume that all these folks are part of the commission, a majority of folks have communicated information within the commission's jurisdiction among themselves. And I don't know if you, if you all played this game when you were in elementary school, but I remember playing it, the game Telephone, where y'all stand in a line and the first person in the line whispers a message to their, to the person next to them and it goes down the line. At the very end, someone yells out what they think the original message was. And it's always like, you know, the message starts with, I don't know, I love raspberries. And it ends with, I eat boogers or whatever, you know, something silly, something totally misconstrued. And so in addition to depriving the public of being able to hear and participate in these deliberations that lead you to a formal action, these types of daisy chain meetings can also breed misinformation because you don't necessarily know if the message you're hearing is accurate. And so there are practical reasons why you want to avoid this type of communication among yourselves beyond just making sure that we're in compliance with the law. So the other type of informal meeting setup that we have to try and avoid is this hub-and-spoke scenario. And here you have an intermediary who, in this case, it's Homer. He's telling Lisa something and then Homer is then going ahead and telling the same message to Bart. And then he's over there whispering the same message to Marge. And so you have this middle man who's effectively reached out to a majority of the membership. And although not everyone is at the same place and location, now a majority has potentially come to a collective concurrence on something or heard some information that really should be vetted publicly and discussed here at a regular meeting. So again, you run into the same sort of pitfalls as a daisy chain. You don't know if the information you're hearing when it's based on hearsay is necessarily correct. And again, deprives the public of being able to understand how we came to a decision on a matter. Now, in the age of digital technology and, you know, especially post-COVID, it's really easy to find ourselves in these inadvertent meetings. And so be mindful that when you use technology platforms, you could very well be walking into an informal meeting situation. Some of the easy ones to identify are like if you were to send an email to a majority of your commissioners and clearly there's some discussion being had over an item that's, you know, on planning commission's agenda. You know, I think it's pretty clear to tell in those situations, oh, wait, there are three out of the five of us on this email communication. We probably should not be having this conversation over email. Let's wait and have it on Monday night. Typically, I think when staff reaches out to you via email, we try to blind copy all of the members to help you avoid accidentally hitting reply all and then engaging in a robust discussion amongst the majority of you all. But again, it's just, it's very easy to accidentally send that email to the entire commission. Virtual meetings are clearly subject to the Brown Act. We had a lot of our meetings during COVID via Zoom. But that kind of goes, that, that, that kind of forum carries over to things like FaceTime as well as text messages. But the one I really want to point out to you is social media. There have been recent cases, as well as an amendment to the Brown Act, that actually govern your conduct over social media platforms. And commissioners are no longer allowed to directly reply to another commissioner's social media post if it's on a subject that's within the planning commission's jurisdiction without violating the Brown Act. So hitting the like button or otherwise emoting in response to a commissioner's comment or obviously directly responding in text on a comment to like a Facebook post or Twitter post can violate the Brown Act. And yes, go ahead, Mr. Elrich.
Any like, anything that the other commissioners posted? You can't like or comment on anything that they've posted?
If it's within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. So if someone's like, today is my birthday and you say happy birthday, that's perfectly fine. I don't want to discourage you from being friendly with your colleagues. But you know, if someone says there's a project that's coming before the commission on Monday night, please show up to support, you know, and, and you give, you know, information about that project. And then another commissioner jumps in and kind of likes it or uh reacts to it in any way. That actually now violates the Brown Act. You don't have to have a majority of you on that string in order to be a meeting in violation of the act. You know, it's again, very easy to inadvertently do something like that. Social media really enables us to be very reactionary and very um emotive behind our computer screens. And so I just caution you, know your forum, know your audience and think about the subject matter um before you engage in that sort of communication. Okay, so one thing I will briefly mention, this isn't Brown Act, but the other sunshine law that I mentioned earlier is the Public Records Act. And so I don't know how many of you um, you know, download commission agendas on your personal computers or your tablets. Or if you answer emails to members of the public regarding city business or you talk over text to the public regarding city business, to the extent that you use your personal devices to discuss planning commission business, those records can be subject to public disclosure if there is a request that comes in under the Public Records Act. Previously, cities tried to argue, you know, that's on a commissioner's personal device. We have no um direct control or authority over those records. But the courts have found that even if we use personal devices, if we are discussing business that's within our commission's jurisdiction, those conversations can be uh releasable under the Public Records Act. So again, cautioning you as you discuss with members of the public that things may be public records, even though it feels like you're in a private forum. All right, so what are not meetings? What are things you are allowed to do without violating the Brown Act? One-on-one conversations with other people are not going to be a violation of the Brown Act. Again, though, as long as they are not serving as that intermediary, hub and spoke, um, you know, middleman. So um, one sort of practical tip I like to advise uh our commissioners on is if you are talking to someone and you don't know if they've already spoken to any of your other colleagues and it's about planning commission business, you can always open your conversation with, hey, before we start this conversation, have you talked to any of other, any of the other commissioners about this topic? And if they say yes, and they've talked to like, you know, two other members, then you may say, hey, you know, I, I, I um, I would like to hear the information. I welcome you to attend our meeting on Monday and that would be an appropriate forum for you to raise these issues amongst a majority of us. Just so that you kind of know and can position yourself to avoid that inadvertent informal meeting. There is a laundry list of other things that the law um considers non-meetings, which means that you are allowed to engage in. Open and public meetings by a, another person or organization other than the city. Conferences that are open to the public. Social or ceremonial events such as holiday parties. The caveat in all of these things being that if a majority of you attend one of these events, it's not a meeting as long as a majority of you don't talk about business that is within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. So I have some examples here. I don't know if you can see the pictures, but if you look closely, who thinks that the image on the top left is a meeting subject to the Brown Act? Looks like there's a disco ball. People are kind of dressed up in different costumes. Anybody? I agree. I don't think that's a meeting subject to the Brown Act. It looks like a pretty social party. How about the bottom uh right-hand corner, lyrics workshop with Tom Petty? Subject to the Brown Act or no? Brown Act, why do you think Brown Act? So I will say that that is very cautious issue spotting. And I would probably argue if I had to that a lyrics workshop with Tom Petty would not be a Brown Act meeting because your subject matter jurisdiction here is planning and zoning law. But if we change the title of that meeting to planning workshop with Tom Petty, absolutely a Brown Act meeting because I would say there's some discussion that would be had within your jurisdiction and yes.
Our thing says planning on it.
It does say, oh, I'm sorry, that's right. The printout doesn't have the graphics, okay. Well then, Commissioner Monaco, you are absolutely right. It is a Brown Act meeting. Um, okay, another few uh, another few non-meeting scenarios. Open and notice meetings of other bodies of the local agency. So if you all were to attend a city council meeting, um, you know, you are allowed to do that without violating the Brown Act. As well as open and notice meetings of standing committees of your commissions. Again, provided that.
Could you clarify that? So in other words, if I'm in a council meeting and there's a question that either I've seen before, I know it's going to come in front of us, I should really disclose that I am, and I want to make a comment at that meeting. I should disclose that I am on the planning commission, correct?
So it depends. If a majority of you have shown up as part of, and, and and you're making that comment on behalf of the planning commission, then yes, I would disclose that you are a planning commissioner. And frankly, again, the caveat here is that a majority of you do not discuss amongst yourselves business of a specific nature within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. So theoretically, you may already be agendized on council's agenda. So this is kind of like a, it's a tricky one because yes, it's not considered a meeting, but really the council meeting is subject to the Brown Act and is in theory um complying with the Brown Act. Now, if you are showing up as a member of the public in your personal capacity, then it would be important during public comment to disclose, yes, I'm a member of the planning commission, however, my comments here today are to you as a resident of the community and not on behalf of the commission. And so that would be, I think, the distinction. Yeah, yeah. So um, I'm going to briefly mention here, I told you I would come back to this topic, subcommittees. Now, there are instances where boards or commissions uh within the city have created subcommittees, which are um typically composed of less than a majority of the membership. And there are two types. There's a standing subcommittee as well as an ad hoc subcommittee. Standing committees, which have continuing subject matter jurisdiction there for an indefinite period of time, they are subject to the Brown Act and their meetings have to be open and public. And so an example of that type of a standing committee might be if you were to appoint two of you to, let's say, do site visits for every project that comes before the planning commission. And there's, you know, there's no um specific focus other than you want this group to do site visits and report back to the commission as a whole. Where they have that sort of continuing indefinite subject matter jurisdiction, all of their individual meetings where they go out to sites would need to be open and public, meaning they have to be noticed, they have to be agendized, they have to be publicly accessible. Now, if you were to appoint an ad hoc committee, which would be um again, less than a majority of you, and it's for a specific purpose and a limited duration. So you have a project that's come before the commission. You want to know more about the project site before you, you um deliberate and come to a decision. And so you appoint two members to go out, you know, view the site conditions and report back at the next regularly scheduled meeting on their observations. That would not be a standing committee that's subject to the Brown Act. Those folks could go out, you know, the two of them on their own, evaluate the site, come back, report back, and you would be within, within the law. So I say this because sometimes we have boards and commissions who um like to create these standing or these subcommittees. I always tell them, please consult with staff because staff will know how to set it up in a way that will facilitate whatever purpose you really want the subcommittee to fulfill. Because if we're not careful, we could inadvertently create another subcommittee subject to the Brown Act and then you have all these procedural rules that go along with their meetings. So. All right, we've covered meetings. Now on to the second part of what the Brown Act regulates, which is agendas. The Brown Act requires that agendas for all of your public meetings must be posted at least 72 hours before the regular meeting at a location that's freely accessible um to the public as well as online. So, you know, why is this important? It gives members of the public an opportunity to attend and weigh in um on the issue at hand. And so agendas, um, what's on an agenda is governed again by state law. It includes kind of the who, what, where, when, and how of an item. There's usually a brief general description of the item as well as the recommendation to the board or commission. There is a section for um disability requests, so ADA requests. And the public must be given an opportunity to comment before the board takes action on an item. So sometimes folks ask, you know, can we take action or discuss an item that doesn't, that doesn't appear on the public agenda? You know, is there a way that we can kind of be savvy and make the agenda item really broad so that we talk about anything under the sun? And my answer is no. We need to give the public an opportunity to come. And again, the reason for this is your agenda is your roadmap to the meeting. If you don't post it and you don't let the public know what you intend to talk about, someone who may have an interest in that subject doesn't know to come and listen in, doesn't know to come and give you their feedback on that topic. And so it really does a disservice to the public when we deviate from the agenda because it doesn't give them that opportunity to understand why you may be making the decisions that you are as well as to give you their perspective on an issue. Now, there are some exceptions and basically all of these involve briefly responding to comments, briefly making statements about um, you know, your personal activities, asking brief questions for clarification, providing references to staff for factual information or briefly requesting that staff report back at a subsequent meeting. You heard me say the word brief over and over again. So to the extent that you have to deviate from the agenda, we really um require and the law really requires that those statements be brief. And if it requires a full, robust discussion, let staff know and we can agendize it for a future meeting so that you can have that full discussion in public. And finally, the Brown Act requires that all of the legislative body meetings must be publicly accessible. So our meeting locations have to be open as well as ADA accessible. The public has to have access to our agenda materials. So again, those are posted online and if things are distributed to you before the meeting, we usually bring extra copies so that, so that the public can have copies when they come in person that evening um as well as an opportunity for public participation. And again, that happens through public comment. There are some instances where um legislative bodies can go into closed session. These instances are specifically enumerated in the law. And most of these subject matters do not fall within the subject matter jurisdiction of a border committee. They are uh typically reserved um for council. And so I mentioned them here just because someone might say, well, the council gets to go behind closed doors and go into closed session and it's only because they are talking about a topic that the law specifically allows them to go into closed doors to talk about. And even then, at the end of closed session for council meetings, we have to report out on the council's activities. And so it is closed session, but it's not completely closed, if you will. Again, this does not typically come up in our boards and commissions and not in planning commission. Say that again.
Because people can still show up to the closed session, right?
No, so people can, members of the public can't attend closed session, but at the end of our closed sessions, we have to report out on any formal action that the council takes in closed session. So the public kind of gets insight into what happens, what, what the final action or outcome is um out of those closed session deliberations. So finally, you know, this isn't really part of the Brown Act, but it's closely related. I just want to mention it to you all. Boards and committees are allowed to adopt your own rules of, general rules of decorum. And I have to say, you all are a fantastic commission. I really appreciate how professional you have all been, at least while I've attended. And so I don't know that if the planning commission actually has a set of rules of decorum. It's usually something that happens at like a formation meeting. So Infrastructure Oversight Board, for instance, was formed back in 2018, I think. And at their very first meeting, they adopted some rules of decorum that govern things like, you know, limits on public comment time, how to place, you know, a process for placing items on a future agenda, that kind of thing. So um I just bring it up um in case the commission ever gets to a point where you feel like that discussion may be necessary. But again, I have to commend you on the fact that you are such a very well-run professional commission. There is a new state law that went into effect this year that actually allows us to remove someone from a meeting if they are disrupting the meeting in any way. It prohibits willful interruptions um that basically make the orderly conduct of a meeting infeasible. Now, unless that person's behavior involves a use of fort, uh, sorry, a use of force or threat of force, then that person has to first be given a warning prior to being removed. So it gives us the ability to really, you know, remove people who are trying to impede our governmental process and our ability to conduct successful business. So finally, um, a few other things for you to think about. I just want to briefly mention conflicts of interest. As you know, for many of our planning commission items, there is a there's usually a question during um public hearings about whether or not any commissioners have any conflicts to disclose. The reason for that question is because we are governed by um a body of laws that prohibits conflicts of interest. So there are common law conflicts of interest, which are anything that basically divides your loyalty to the city. So these can be personal bias, they can be bias in favor of a project or personal bias against a project. Anything that may prevent you from being impartial in your decision-making. There are things called 1090 conflicts of interest. It's referring to Government Code Section 1090, which prohibits a public official from making or participating in making any contract in which they have a financial interest. And again, that doesn't require you to actually approve a contract. You could just be talking about it and making recommendations. But if you have any sort of financial interest, whether it's positive or negative in the outcome of that contract, then that, your participation in that deliberation automatically voids it. As you are aware, you are also subject to the Political Reform Act, which again speaks to financial conflicts of interest. And you can have financial um interests in anything from, you know, business investments, real property that you both own or rent, any source of income, so like your employer's, sources of gifts, anything that affects your personal finances. And the analysis can be somewhat convoluted. You have to go through um a materiality standard test, a reasonableness test. And so I bring this up here again, not for you to memorize what these tests are, but to keep them in the back of your mind so that as you look at your agendas, when they're distributed to you before the planning commission meeting, if you see an applicant or you see a project that may be close in proximity to somewhere that you live or where you may have some personal feelings about the project outside of this commission that may, you know, affect your impartiality, we're all human and that's perfectly fine. Please consult with us early on. You know, reach out to planning staff, reach out to me and we can go through that analysis. Because what's really hard is when you come to the meeting and five minutes before you let, you whisper to us, hey, I don't know if I have a conflict of interest in this item, can you let me know? The, the, the financial conflicts of interest really involve very um detailed analysis. And so I will please ask you to just reach out to us early or as early as possible if you can so that we can give you sound advice. So that we can give you sound advice. And so lastly, you know, staff here, we're we're your shepherds through this. Um, I know sometimes it might seem like, you know, we're the parent who's like glaring over at you to like quiet down or whatever. That's not what we're doing. We really just want everybody to stay within the bounds of the law. And so please use this as a resource if you ever have a question about procedural decorum or any of these state laws. Um, because, you know, we're happy to answer, happy to walk through the analysis with you. And um again, the earlier you bring the questions to our attention, the better advice we can give. So with that, does anybody have any questions? Sure, go ahead.
For those of us who need and 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 uh who needed, will we be getting M C L E credit for this?
Unfortunately, no, I'm so sorry. We, yeah, we, but that is a great question and I can bring it back to my office. Because there are some uh really strict requirements actually to be M C L E proficient. So M M C L E are basically continuing education credits for lawyers. And um so no, we are not set up to be M C L E. Uh, but thank you for asking.
Thank you for that presentation.
Chair. Maybe just for the sake, so um. Just to to clarify, or maybe this is a question you may have. So we've seen a lot of specific plans that have been coming through the process here. Um, some of which may be in areas where you live. So I guess a question for the city attorney is. You know, I know typically when we submit these applica- we have a particular project and you'll get your radius map. That shows where you are in proximity to the project. Is is there kind of a. And it may be complicated, but let's kind of flesh it out. In a specific plan which could include six hundred acres. And you have a commissioner that may live within that area, can they participate in that review or do they have to recuse themselves?
So if it's a conflict like that or if it's a decision like that, that will affect the public generally in the same way that it affects you. Then you are allowed to participate in those decisions. That said, if you have very strong personal feelings about a specific plan effort or any other project for that matter that may. Somehow personally affect, you know, your property or uh any other financial interests that you may have. It would be good to disclose that ahead of time so that we can ensure your impartiality in your decision-making. So for a specific plan effort, I would say that generally it's probably broad enough that it affects. An individual commissioner the same way it affects the public generally within the community. And so they would still be able to participate in those decisions and deliberations.
And just to move it kind of down to the micro level, if there's a project within your neighborhood that maybe is not within. The specified distances that we typically call out, but yet there's strong feelings on a particular issue, how would they approach that?
Uh, you know, I would, I would definitely reach out to staff and let us know and we can go through the multi-pronged analysis. To make sure everybody is comfortable either with your participation or without. If you do have a financial conflict of interest that arises under the Political Reform Act. Your obligation is to disclose it on the dais before the item is discussed and actually remove yourself from. From the dais so that there is no perception that you are um, you know, inadvertently influencing your colleagues. So uh, you know, I will say that there are some folks here on city staff who have recused themselves from participation in some of our specific plan efforts. Because the project does, you know, touch um or cover areas where they own property. In a way that we just want to make sure all of the decision-makers um who are participating are impartial. So um I do encourage you to look at these projects, look at how they affect your neighborhoods. And if you have a question about whether or not you are allowed to participate, participate or not, please reach out to us. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. And uh we'll be sending Mr. Monaco over on that uh public library project. Everything okay?
Yeah.
All right. I was joking, that was a joke. Okay. Uh, now is the time uh for the approval of the minutes from the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting. Are there any questions, comments, and perhaps more appropriately a motion?
I motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Okay. Where's the next line? It's supposed to say we're supposed to take a vote on this.
Uh, Madam Clerk, if we can just poll the commission on the uh, on the vote.
Vice Chair Deconian?
I'll abstain since I was not present. It's April twenty-fourth, so I wasn't gonna be here.
Commissioner Monaco?
Yes.
Commissioner Elric?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wick?
Yes.
So we have uh three yeses, motion passes. Now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Planning commission members may introduce new items for discussion. But no action may take place except to place the item on a future agenda. Do members of the commission have any items to introduce?
Just have a question for staff. Um, there are, I believe, a couple that I had um asked for agenda items. I'm not sure um you guys are still working on those or not.
Uh, everything that's been requested is in the queue. We just uh, there's other items that are. Taking the limited time that we have, but it it is, we're well aware of it.
Still on.
Some of which uh you brought up, like in the case of equestrian overlays, those were actually discussed at council. So uh regarding the Rancho specific plan, so we kind of wove it in, but we can provide an update. At a future meeting, just to give you a narrative of what was presented to the um council regarding a proposed. Rancho neighborhood specific plan. Uh, one of the comments. Brought up at the commission, I think in the meeting, I remember saying it's gonna be, your comments are noted and they'll be forwarded to council. But we can provide an update to you as well.
Thank you.
Uh, that's one of them. There were a handful of others, but.
Yeah.
They are in the queue. It's just as soon as we get an opportunity, we'll bring those to you.
I I have an item that uh, I'm not sure when the library issue or or plan or discussion is gonna come back. Now, I don't want to make a special request uh what I alluded to during the meeting. Uh, but I'm not sure how it would be remembered. So my request is. To try and get some information on uh. Measure P as far as the numbers, how it's been in place since, let's say, twenty eighteen. How much has been raised? How much is uh, is 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 uh, you know, idle sitting there? Um, perhaps some additional information about uh. The the money that was appropriated or spent, what it was spent on.
Sure.
And lastly, these. And along the same lines, these P three model uh. Partnerships or relationships, how many have there uh, have we had P three uh model type of a project in Burbank?
In Burbank? This would be the first one of its kind, yeah.
Okay, so I think it's very important and I'm not sure if it exists. Maybe this, this is probably more uh for uh the city attorney. The contract, a a a pro- uh, how should I say, a sample contract that the city would enter into. With the developers or the developer, because I think that is key for the citizens to get an insight on. What type of a deal may be cut. And those citizens, so they're aware, well, you know, this is the type of a deal we usually cut or most of the time we cut. So when they come here to discuss the project, they can ask questions and get answers to those questions. Because my concern is if that part, because I know this kind of comes under the Brown Act, so it's not. It's not something that the citizenry would be privy to all the details. But I think a sample contract would give them an opportunity to get a better understanding of how something, how this partnership would work. And maybe ask questions about the, some details about the uh workings of this partnership.
So I can start in just because I think we kind of need to separate a couple of things there and. So Ms. Goldman presented the Civic Center project, just kind of in a general overview of. A project that's actually part of a larger land planning development process that we're undertaking under the specific plan. But to your point, a lot of those detailed questions regarding the financing, how this thing would be put together. Are things that are gonna be undertaken in a very systematic way uh through. The team with the consultants that have been selected and the the economic team and they're gonna present those components to the council. That, once that information is presented to council and there is a point of contracts being awarded. Or they're being considered, those would be disclosed and those would be made available for the public to review before they make a final decision. So. All those things are coming, however, being aware that, as you recall, just like with other private projects. We may be going through an entitlement process to consider land use components of a project. But the final approval is that of the council, right? So you'd make a recommendation from a land use standpoint. This is what the planning commission is looking at from a zoning, general plan consistency. And based on that analysis, as the land use body tasked with looking at the city's development requirements. We recommend X or Y regarding this particular project, let's say the Civic Center. That information goes forward as the requested entitlements and ultimately would go to council. Council then may have a larger package of components they're looking at. They're looking at the entitlement as well as these other financing components. The perfect example is the planned development, where in that particular instance, you were looking at. All the land use entitlement requirements and all the community benefits, but you weren't, you know, sitting here negotiating dollars and cents as far as. The final deal of the project, but you were able to see a draft of the agreement or whatnot. So I just put that out there because. The questions you guys asked collectively are very good questions to kind of know just the breadth and depth of what's being discussed. With the public and with the council, but there are gonna be components that ultimately will be negotiated and then once negotiated. They'll take a formal action in front of the public and that'll be made available. But I just wanted to put that out there, that as as interesting as those details and all the interesting information you gave and kind of how to consider. Bifurcating processes and looking at how things get financed, at the end of the day, ultimately a a project will come forth. Whether it's individually or as part of a larger planning effort and those you'd be looking at under its own merits. Depending on what the land use entitlement is that's being requested. If there's a general plan amendment, you make a recommendation that goes to the council. Council makes a final decision with a myriad of other things that are looked at, including the financial outcomes, the costs and benefits of the project and and everything else. But I just wanted to make sure because sometimes we get really excited about getting into the the finer details of the financing and how this thing is gonna work. But when it comes to the land use body, you're you're really gonna be tasked with a particular set of criteria. That we're gonna be asking you for input. Those other things are are things you can ask a question for as far as they're relevant to the entitlement. But ultimately, that's why we have a council and that's why things go to the council, for them to make a final decision. What they're gonna need your help in is making sure that the land use entitlements are appropriately vetted. And any uh environmental issues are appropriately addressed so that you can make a recommendation. But I'll turn it over to Lisa after that.
No, I'll just briefly say that if you do look at the staff report that Ms. Goldman furnished. Um, Exhibit C includes the city council staff report that was presented on August ninth of last year. Which was basically a P three study session. So it it gave council some more background on what a P three model really looks like. And the, as you mentioned, these contracts are very complex. And so this is a project where we would bring in special counsel who is um, you specializes in things like real estate and public financing. And once we know um, i- it's a multi-step process for the procurement. So an R F P would be issued where we receive um. Proposals from interested developers on what the project would look like. And once council reviews those and decides um which project model they prefer. We would extend an offer to enter into a, an exclusive negotiation period. Where we develop a contract based on the model that we select for the project. So it's a very, it and and every step of the way is a public process. All of our contracts are public and would come before the council before being. Um, finalized. So if you want to get some more background on the general P three process that staff has been envisioning. I do suggest you take a look at Exhibit C and if you'd like, you can even go onto Granicus to watch the August ninth council meeting. Where one of our um special consultants, I believe, actually came and presented as well to give some more background on what this model. May look like for Burbank.
And I guess based on our Brown Act training, we'd have to agendize if you want to have more discussion on it, but I think we gave you a pretty good summary.
Well, my my only, the the reason why I was asking this is uh, an informed public is is a a good thing to have. And from, I guess uh. Hearing and and seeing and following some of the things that happen in other uh cities. Uh, it's a concern where there are, where there's a public entity and private interests. Are trying to come together uh at a single place and uh. Lends itself to uh shenanigans, let's just say. So uh, that was my concern and I I don't, I don't. It it's been there, so I just don't want to see it in Burbank, that's all. So uh. Once the public is aware and they see what's going on, they'll ask the appropriate questions uh of the city council. Uh, and 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 it's their right to know. Uh, it's and and it's their right to ask and their right to uh to get the answers to.
And I think we we all agree with you that um, in my six-plus years here. We've had a very good relationship of disclosing as much information as necessary to the public. But I totally hear the concern and I think the council has made a, redoubled their effort in having. A very long presentation on P threes and others, but we totally understand. I think they're gonna do everything and the intent is to do everything above board. Uh, and all that information will be made available, but but really good questions in the sense of where is data available? How can we look at it? Um, as far as the funding sources you were talking about with Measure P, we can talk to our finance people and they probably, I'm pretty sure there's a report. That summarizes it and we can forward that to you so you have that information, but thank you for that input.
And I wasn't uh making any accusations of that it is going on or it's going to happen. All I was saying is the best policy is to put it all on the table so it never does happen. So uh, and and I have great faith in all the mechanisms that are in in place here in Burbank. And uh, and I, as I mentioned, I don't want it to happen. So, all right, I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, any other items? Okay. Uh, now's the time for the city planner comments. Are there any comments from the city planner?
Uh, no, just thank you all for participating in tonight's meeting. I know there was. We didn't have an individual project, but I think thank you for all the input across the board, including for our um. Team member colleague from uh Library Services. I think Ms. Goldman really appreciates all that feedback. And uh she's been doing a lot to reach out to all the different boards and commissions, so this just adds. To that information and just kind of our overall knowledge of community concerns and interests and desires. But we we totally agree with you that there's a lot of great opportunities and synergy that a project of this magnitude could bring. Uh, to bring a lot of uh community services in focus. So if it can happen and we can develop it. Uh, I think it's a great opportunity for the community, something to look into, as you said, with full disclosure uh when it comes forth. But it's good to get a preview, uh, you know, and I think that was one of the reasons where we were. Packaging it after you heard about the downtown specific plan, to see kind of like an individual project coming through. So thank you for that input.
We now adjourn to the uh planning commission meeting on Monday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three at six P M. This meeting will be held in person in the city council chambers at two seven five East Olive Avenue. The public is invited to attend the meeting in person or to view the meeting online or on television. The public will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways, in person, at the appropriate time during the. In person, at the appropriate time during the meeting, by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, www dot burbankca dot gov slash ecomments, by calling in directly to the Planning Commission meeting at eight one eight, two three eight, three 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 five. Thank you all for your participation and good night.